Good evening. For those of you here with us this evening, please silence your cell phones and be advised that these proceedings are being recorded. For those of you who wish to speak, well, most of you will probably be speaking during staff time, so I don't see any members of the public here. But if members of the public come and want to comment, or they join us via Zoom and they'd like to comment, they will be allowed three minutes' speaking time. At this time, I will call to order and convene a joint special meeting workshop of the City Council and Planning Commission of the City of Grand Terrace for Thursday, April 21st, If you would please rise. Mayor Protem Hesse will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in pledging our flag. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Madam City Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Allenese.
Present.
Commissioner Sisena.
Here.
Chairman Giroux.
Present.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Hesse.
Here.
Mayor McNabbell.
Present.
Councilmembers Robles and Allen are absent. Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Do we have any requests for public comment?
No, we do not.
Of this section? Okay. So we have one item of new business on our agenda, and that is a joint City Council and Planning Commission workshop. We will be listening to a staff report on the Senate Bill Number 9 pertaining to urban lot splits and two-unit developments and accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units and related proposed ordinances. Heidi Aguirre, Associate Planner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the council, Chairman Giroux, and members of the Planning Commission. This presentation is a joint workshop to review the Senate Bill Number 9 on accessory dwelling units legislation, and we're going to discuss the city's objective standards to govern future SB 9 and ADU developments here in the city. I want to let you know that our legal expert, Brian Wright-Bushman, he's joining us via Zoom. This item supports vision statement, goal number three, to promote economic development by updating zoning and development code in preparation for future growth and to preserve and protect our community and its exceptional quality of life through thoughtful planning. On January 25th, 2022, the City Council adopted an urgency ordinance to establish objective standard regulations for SB 9 regulations for lot splits and also for new unit developments. At this meeting, the City Council directed staff to bring back an ordinance to include additional requirements for SB 9 and also for the ADU requirements. On March 3rd, 2022, the Planning Commission conducted a notice public hearing and voted unanimously four to zero recommending City Council adoption of two ordinances. One was for the SB 9 and another one was for the ADU requirements. On March 22nd of 2022, the City Council conducted a notice public hearing, voted unanimously zero to five to continue the public hearing to a date uncertain, and directed staff to conduct a joint City Council Planning Commission meeting, which is what we're holding tonight, and we're going to further review and discuss state legislation and requirements for both of these ordinances. We are going to start our review with the ADUs, which is the accessory dwelling units and the junior ADUs. The legislation on accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units have been updated multiple times. The last time this became effective, the last update, was January 1st, 2021. The city's current ADU ordinance was adopted in 2017, and therefore, we do need to get that updated. State law has established many requirements, but it does allow us to implement additional objective standards to the ADUs and junior ADUs as long as we do not conflict with the state requirements. ADUs by law are permitted on single-family residential, multifamily, and mixed-use residential zoning. This is the Grand Terra zoning map. On the legend highlighted in red, you can see the zoning where these ADUs and junior ADUs will be applicable to. Per state requirements, ADUs must be approved through a ministerial approval. ADUs can be attached to, detached to, or built with other dwelling structures or be created by converting non-habitable structures. Per state legislation, a parcel with one or more single-family dwellings can have up to one ADU. The amount of ADUs allowed within a multifamily dwelling is going to be equal to 25% of the number of units within that multifamily dwelling. And there's a provision that the fractional units need to be rounded down. Also, there can be up to two detached ADUs in a parcel with a multifamily dwelling. Per state legislation, ADUs must have complete independent living facilities and can be limited to 850 square feet for a studio or a one-bedroom unit, and they're also limited to 1,000 square feet for two or more bedrooms. ADUs cannot be smaller than an efficiency unit, and that means 220 square feet. An attached ADU can be limited to 50% of the floor area of the main dwelling, but keep in mind, it cannot be smaller than 800 square feet. Per state legislation, also, the city may not impose a four-foot rear or side foot setback. ADUs cannot be sold separately from the main property, and only one parking space can be required for ADUs. There are some exemptions. Those are if you live within half a mile walking distance from a bus stop. Per state legislation, ADUs that are up to 750 square feet are exempt from impact fees. Any larger unit than 750 may be charged an impact fee, but the fees need to be proportional in size by square foot to those of the primary dwelling unit. Now, for junior ADUs, the legislation requires that they have to be completely within the single-family residence. They are prohibited on the multifamily dwelling units. They must have independent living facility and an efficiency kitchen. They may share a bathroom with the main residence, and they are limited to 500 square feet in Per state legislation, junior ADUs require the property owner to live in either the junior ADU or the main primary dwelling. Junior ADUs cannot be sold separately also from the main residence. They do not have a parking requirement. And a deed restriction must be recorded in a junior ADU to make sure that they remain compliant with the state requirements. That concludes the legislation portion. Now, we're going to be opening the discussion for our additional ordinance standards, and we're going to start with the size requirements. The city can establish a minimum or a maximum size for ADUs. The minimum size cannot be smaller than that efficiency unit, which is the 220 square feet. If the city wants to be very restrictive on the size, we can do the following. We can say that a studio and a one-bedroom unit is limited to a maximum size of 850 square feet. We can say that two or more bedroom units are limited to 1,000 square feet, and this would be for detached units. For attached ADUs, the one studio on the one-bedroom unit is going to be limited to the maximum size of 850 square feet or 50% of the main dwelling, whichever is less. For a two or more bedroom units, we can do 1,000 square feet and 50% or 50% of the primary dwelling, whichever is less. These sizes can be increased. Keep in mind that there's size limitations are not going to apply for ADUs that are built within the existing footprint of a house, and these are the requirements that staff is recommended. Does the council or the commission have any comments regarding the size requirements?
Any questions for staff at this time? Okay, continue. Oh, did you have a question? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Chairman Giroux.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. The 220 square foot versus the 850 square foot ADU? I'm lost on why they're saying 220 and then, or are we going to require the 850 square?
Oh, no. The 220 is what the legislation considers an efficiency unit. That's the smallest size. It cannot be smaller than an efficiency unit, and I just wanted to highlight that as part of the legislation. But for a detached ADU, the requirement is 850 square feet. That would be the maximum size that they can do if they are detached, and for two or more bedroom units, 1,000 square feet.
That's what you're suggesting? We add to what the state requirements currently are?
These are to be very restrictive. We can actually increase the square footage.
What is the definition of an efficiency unit? Is it just a small ADU? Is it a kitchen and a bathroom and a sleeping area, and that's it? I mean, 220 square feet is pretty small.
It is pretty small. If you don't mind, I'm going to have Brian give us a better explanation on that if he's on the line.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
My name is Brian Wright-Bushman. I work in the City Attorney's Office. I don't know exactly what's required in an efficiency unit. I believe it's defined by the California Building Code. It's 220 square feet, and it's permissible as a residential unit, so I assume that it would need to have whatever is necessary for an independent dwelling unit. Obviously, it's quite small, though.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Did you want to discuss these sizes? Chairman Giroux?
Well, the recommendation on this staff that we look at the 850 with the 50, what is present being presented on the screen?
What is present on the screen is what we had recommended on the ordinance, and we are, we may modify the size if the council and the commission desire to change the size requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Wilson.
Now, as you said, it can be larger. It can be increased, and so the question for us is whether we want to pre-prepare rather than do it on a case-by-case basis, to have legislation in place on how a formulaic version of that can work out. For example, I have a half acre of land. I've got plenty of room in the back to do whatever I want to do, and I also have room to the side if I wanted to do that as an attached unit. 10 years ago, I built an ADU before they were allowed to the extent that they are. My understanding is, is that junior ADUs do not, well, first of all, they share an access, and then junior ADUs don't require the sanitation version of it. I think, I'm not 100% sure, but I think efficiency units have something to do with cooking facilities. So you would need some kind of a sink, but what you would not necessarily have available to you is anything other than a microwave or a burner, you know, like a hot plate. So that might be the distinction. And then, of course, if it follows with the juniors, that means you'd have an opening to the house next door, and you would share sanitary facilities, which includes toilet or water closet and a shower or tub circumstance. Now, I didn't see anything in our impending ordinance that distinguishes between what's stated in the state hyperbole on sanitation. So I think it might behoove us to describe that so there isn't any mistake. You know, sometimes people, when they apply for things, they kind of mull over it and figure, well, I think I know what that is, but it would be better for us to say it's a shower or a tub combo, and, you know, at least so that they know that they have to allow for that within that space. So going back to the original thought pattern, if it can be increased, how do we justify it? If we can justify it, or if we can go over, say, an 850-square-foot threshold for a single and just really make something nice for a person, you know, we've got a loved one that's maybe living in this place or something, how can we, numbers-wise, work on the idea of that increase? And how can we put a ceiling past that? Because there really isn't any ceiling to the max if we can justify the increase.
There's some cities that have less restricted standards, and they're using the 1,200 square feet maximum square footage.
And what did they link that to? Do you know?
That is per legislation. It's that for a detached ADU, 1,200 square feet is the maximum.
Okay.
I'm just going to step in, sorry. I believe actually the city, if you would like to be less restrictive, you could make them even larger than 1,200. 1,200 is sort of the default in state law as a maximum size, but state law does allow cities to be even less restrictive if they would like to. But Ms. Aguirre is correct that many cities set a limit at 1,200 square feet.
Oh, wow. 1,200.
Okay. We have a lot, I'm just asking that question because we have a lot of large lots that can afford the space, especially if they want to provide it for something other than just to rent it out to somebody. So we're dabbling with 1,200 square foot as the max if we can tie it to some kind of lot-sized justification? Or do we just want to leave it up to the setbacks?
For the, where we're going to run with an issue, it would be probably with our smaller, single-family residential zoning, which is the 7,200 square feet, because they don't have the one-acre lot size requirement that the bigger, the other zonings have, like the Hillside Residential, and they are 1-20 and are 1-10. We can probably place requirements maybe based on the square footage of the lot size, depending on the zoning. We could be more restrictive with our smaller, single-family parcel residential and keep it as restrictive in those areas because they're the smaller parcels, and then maybe increase the size on the bigger lot sizes.
So along the lines of what Councilman Wilson has, maybe something that is a lot coverage percentage, so that whatever that percentage is, the residents and the ADU cannot exceed 50% coverage in combination. Therefore, the larger lot you get, the larger the ADU can get to scale to that lot size. And I threw 50 out as a number. I don't know what a good number is, 70 or 10.
Are there standard practices for those types of reviews?
Yeah, that's a pretty standard.
Okay.
And a lot of cities, lot coverage drives beyond the setback piece as well.
Okay. For the record, that was City Manager Bolowitz making those comments and statements. We're in the question mode at this point. I will welcome Councilmember Allen. Are there further questions of staff on ADUs? All right, so we'll go Allenese, Commissioner Allenese, and then we'll say Chair Giroux.
All right. So, Heidi, with what you're proposing right now, what's the floor for the, what's the minimum lot, or, sorry, home size for the ADUs? Are we sticking with the 220? Are we bumping that up a little bit so we don't get caught with all these little houses?
The minimum lot size for the ADUs?
No, I'm sorry, the square footage for the actual home or the ADU?
Oh, the square footage for an ADU that is detached, we are proposing the restrictions, which is the 850 for a one-bedroom, or for a two or more bedrooms, 1,000.
So I'm confused because we're calling it the maximum here.
I believe you're asking for the minimum, right?
Yeah, for the minimum.
So that's 220, correct?
Oh, the minimum.
Yes.
Right.
220.
Do we have to stick with the 220? Or can that be increased?
Brian, do you have any recommendations on the minimum size requirements that we could implement?
I was going to check that really quick. Let's see. Just looking at the state law. I will say that in practice, usually cities don't change the minimum because, I presume, I guess because those are unlikely to be, people are unlikely to build units that small. Some cities don't even set a minimum. They just set a maximum, but I can look into the requirement for the minimum as well.
The reason I ask it, to me, it's being less restrictive by letting, I mean, the threshold to build is much smaller if you have a lot, or a home that's only allowed, you're liable to build something that has 220 square feet, where if we bump it up, gives it, puts it a little more restrictive. I may be looking at it the wrong way. I don't know if anyone else sees it that way.
We can keep it at 800 square feet or 850 square feet.
But that's the maximum. I'm talking about the bare minimum.
You're talking at the bare minimum? We cannot go lower than the 220.
But, I mean, can we go make the minimum?
Yes, you can make it higher if you want to.
So, I'm sorry, I'm going to weigh in here. So, let's see. State law says that the city can establish minimum and maximum lot sizes, or, sorry, unit sizes, but the city cannot establish a minimum square foot requirement that would prohibit an efficiency unit. So I believe what that would mean is you cannot make the minimum larger than an efficiency unit. In other words, you have to allow an efficiency unit if somebody wants one. So that means we couldn't make the minimum larger than 220 square feet. We have to allow something as small as 220 square feet if somebody wants to do that.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Yeah, thank you.
Chairman Giroux.
Thank you. Well, there's additional verbiage here as far as the 50% of the residential, primary residence, as long as it doesn't exceed for the 1,000, 1,000 square foot for the two-plus bedroom, or 50% of the room of the residence. So if you have a 3,000-square-foot residence, they could build technically a 1,500-square-foot unit to attach to it. And the only restrictions we would have with, for that project, would be a four-foot setback all the way around?
The four-foot setback is on the side and the rear. On the front, we are still going to abide by our zoning front setback requirements.
Okay. So then we could, then, I think right now, like, for my project that I was doing at my home, I could use more than 60% of my lot, if I understood that correct, for our zoning? Is that correct?
That would be correct.
So now with this SB 9, we're getting rid of the minimum square footage on lots. They can exceed or take it all up as long as they stay as far as four-foot setbacks on the side and the rear, and then we're going to maintain a front setback.
That's correct.
Well, the city can actually impose that it be no more than a certain percentage of the property is full. That was what City Manager was talking about before. That is something that the city can say.
We can now consider?
We can look at 50% of the lot not be covered with housing, or 60% or something to that effect. But the state is saying it doesn't matter, you can fill it all up. But when you were talking about the 1,000 square foot or 50% of floor in the primary unit, that was an attached ADU that you were referring to.
That was an attached ADU, correct?
Okay.
Mayor?
Mr. City Attorney.
In that example, though, so the way it reads is it's 1,000 or 50% of the floor area of the primary unit, whichever is less. So in your example, you're defaulting to the 1,000 versus the 1,500.
Whichever is smaller, but not less than 800 square feet.
Correct.
If I may just weigh in on the maximum lot coverage requirements, which I believe is what the City Manager was referring to, the city can still impose maximum lot coverage requirements. So for example, imagine that the city says the maximum size is 1,200 square feet, but the lot coverage would only allow, let's say, 1,000 square feet, then the applicant would be limited to 1,000 square feet. There's only one caveat to that, which is that cities are required to waive their development standards if it would require a unit to be smaller than 800 square feet. So there's sort of a cap, or say it's a floor of 800 square feet. So you can apply things like maximum lot coverage as, so long as it doesn't prevent a unit being at least 800 square.
So we can't apply the maximum lot coverage, and then if there's not room to add something that would fit within our size requirements, we can't just say, sorry, you aren't able to do it?
That's correct. You would still have to allow an 800-square-foot unit, even if that would violate lot coverage requirements.
All right, further questions?
I'm still, so if we put the restriction on there, and it doesn't allow them to build the minimum, we would still have to allow them to build the minimum?
Yes.
Okay, now I understand that. Thank you.
Okay. Are we ready to turn Ms. Aguirre loose on the next section?
Next section? Okay. Thank you, Brian. All right, now we're going to discuss the height. If the city wants to be restrictive as possible, the state legislation allows to keep a maximum height of 16 feet. These, however, if you want a less restrictive height, we can change that number to increase it. Furthermore, the city can restrict ADUs to be constructed at ground level only, only on the first story. If the city wants, we can add a second story to allow that as well, if we want to do two stories for ADU, so you can do either one. And the height limitations do not apply for existing structures that are already two stories, and they're just building an ADU within that house. So for the height requirements, does the council and commission would like to keep the 16-feet maximum height?
Councilmember Wilson.
Thank you. I bumped into this over a year ago, and the existing not to exceed 16-foot, there is no perceivable justification for a limitation other than aesthetic preference. And let me clarify that. My understanding that if we're going to put a house over a garage, you've got two different uses. They're incompatible, but you can make them compatible because you can build a firewall between the two, or firewall separation. So technically, that land use is allowed that way. The occupancy is already allowed, or should be allowed. Setbacks, as long as they make the standardized setbacks, for example, if the garage is, even if it's detached and sits in the back of the lot, if we've got a four-foot minimum in the spots for an ADU, or for, you know, for a standard garage, five-foot, and we observe the rear yard, the setbacks are okay. The problem is, is that when you go to build a efficiency unit or an ADU over a garage, for some reason, there's a bugaboo that happened around the '20s that said, I don't know if we like this, and it probably started in Los Angeles and went out from there. If we're really looking to be able to address our affordable situation and allow more use on a lot, this is one of the fastest ways to do it. The floor is already, is already built, the foundation is already built, and all you have to do is chop down the top of it and put up another wall and a roof on it. I don't believe it's unattractive, because if you compare it to a standard two-story house, nowadays, there's very few times where you see a lot of setback, architectural setback and so on. Most houses have graduated or evolved, if you want to call it that, into a straight-up box. And so that the two-story element, a bed, a pair of bedrooms, for example, go right over the top of the two- or three-car garage. So I don't think I understand even the justification for aesthetics. If we were to climb out of this 16-foot bugaboo, we would be one of the first in the nation to do that, and I think it's a good solution. I've seen it all over the county.
Sure.
And they can be. can be made very attractive. In the county, they allow it, the city they don't, in City San Bernardino. But the county, they do allow it. They don't have a limitation, they leave it up to the state, and the state is silent on the height. So I'm going to recommend that we entertain at least a 16, over a 16-foot height.
Up to, like, a two-story level?
Yeah, basically a two-story garage is what it'd be, with living space above the garage. Not any different than a house.
All right. Commissioner Susanna?
Piggybacking on Mr. Wilson's comments, some of the first ADUs that I ever saw were set up exactly like how you're saying. I had a friend who built one on a house out in Bloomington, and she was in the county unincorporated area, so she got away with it. But she had this beautiful two apartments on top of her house, that each one had this nice little staircase going up the side, and I didn't even know they were there. I visited her many times before. She's like, "Oh, yeah, I have tenants upstairs", and she had two one-bedroom units that she had built on the second story of her house, just like what you're saying, using the existing setbacks, using the existing everything. And it was a really beautiful setup. I mean, you wouldn't, you wouldn't even know that those apartments were there. And so this idea that we have to keep everything, we have to keep an eye on things to make sure they don't get strange-looking, but we can do all kinds of things with this. Not every one looks like a tenement house. Hers, it just looked like her house had two extra staircases running up the side. You couldn't tell at all. So there's all kinds of different ways they do these. They tuck them under garages, they tuck them, you know, in all kinds of interesting places. And they don't all look like, you know, a shed in the backyard, which I think is what people are afraid of. And there's just so many more ways to do this that are just beautiful. So I agree with not limiting ourselves to single stories.
I'm concerned about the idea that this is all ministerial, though. And so if you have a height restriction that would equal a two-story, that's fine. But if we're talking, as the two of you are, about aesthetically pleasing-looking building, then that falls to the staff to make sure that what's being built is looked at. And do we have the ability to restrict that? It sounds to me, based on SB nine, no. It's just you will, you will allow them to do these things, and you don't get a site and architectural review out of it.
Mayor, may I add, just for clarification, that 16-foot height, that is the maximum, it would allow for a two-story if we're doing it from the floor to ceiling. So it would allow two stories within that height requirement. And the second part is the ground level. If we want to keep them at ground level, that would be a different conversation. So you can do, the height requirement could be the two-story, but we can further restrict, I mean, construct, restrict it to one story or do allow the two stories. And...
All right. So the suggestion has come, though, that there's an ability to put a structure on top of a garage that would be a, some sort of a, I guess it would be an ADU. I guess it would be considered that. I'm just wondering if that could be a separate issue in our code that would allow that if somebody wanted to, but it had to go through a different process?
Under the ADU requirements, we could allow the ADU to be built on top of a garage.
Can we call it something other than an ADU so that it wouldn't be part of this? It would be a separate process. Mr. City Attorney?
Very creative. I'd probably lean no.
Okay.
But you can establish objective design criteria. So if you are concerned about, just the fact that it has to be ministerial doesn't mean that we can't apply design standards, just means the design standards have to be objective, which may be a difficult thing to write, but potentially could be done. So if there are particular design elements that you either want or are concerned about preventing, we could look at our design standards and potentially even create specific design standards for ADUs, or even ADUs above garages, or whatever, as long as they're objective standards.
Thank you. Councilmember Allen, you have questions?
Yeah, I do. I just want to make sure, Mayor, that I'm clear on what Councilmember Wilson was talking about. So, and also the, Ms. Gary, the presenter, on this second level, or the 16-foot height limit, does that, so you're saying that you can actually have, that doesn't include the attic space, or it does include the attic space?
It does not include the attic.
Okay, or the roof, attic space. So it's just the, yeah, okay. I, because I didn't want it to end up being like, the second level ended up having to be some sort of an attic apartment, you know, with sloped walls and things. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Wilson?
Where I've seen it most often is in the tables that show the various uses, and there is a footnote at the bottom, and it's easily correctable for us, and it would apply to everything. So it's kind of a, because we talked about height, it seemed like a good time to bring this up, because it's in the gist of the affordable housing. It's a footnote on there that says that the garage overall height cannot be more than 16 feet. That's what the county's code says. Our code might say 20, but in the overall, if you were to take it from a, an overall height, and may say, misinterpret it, and somewhere along the line, somebody wanted to tag this for legal reasons, I think we need to be careful, because we want to make sure that the overall height from top of roof down to floor level is specified, there's a maximum for that, rather than calling out the two floors.
Oh, true.
Because what we do in our zoning code, when it comes to building, I think our maximum, well, we ran into it when we did the radio antennas. And the radio antennas, we decided the best way to minimize those, before the state jumped into that argument, was to say that it had to be no taller than the tip of the roof next to it. So if you had a 35-foot max, then you could put a 35-foot antenna up. In this case, it would be simple to say, let's say, a roof usually doesn't go more than, say, a 12-and-12 pitch. A 12-and-12 pitch plus an eight-foot, plus an eight-foot, plus a Joyce, is going to tell you the maximum height that can be supported for a two, for a story over a garage. And that way, there wouldn't, it wouldn't be ambiguous. That's not going to hurt anybody, you can get the same product no matter what happens, and it's sustainable because the state is silent on heights. It leaves it to the locals.
Councilmember Allen?
So, based on this, then, and did I understand that you're offering a suggestion, or, I don't know, emotional, that we should adjust this height limit?
Yes.
Not remove it, but?
Adjust the height level.
Yeah, to make it a little more practical for what we're trying to achieve. Now, have we, have we, have we allowed this in the past? I know, because we actually have, over in the neighborhood I live in, there's several ADUs that are of this nature, built over a garage. So we actually must have some sort of codes and ordinances.
It was, I can answer that. It was allowed in this area, as well as any part of San Bernardino County back in the 20s and 30s. And it's still allowed in the county. And we were part of the county of San Bernardino, so it's not surprising that we have some leftover.
Mr. City Manager?
If I can make a suggestion, maybe if we just step away from the height limit altogether and define it as two stories, then we don't have to worry about, you know, the one story is the garage, the second story is the ADU above it, and if the building happens to have 10-foot ceilings, then it's a 20-foot height. I think what we're trying to avoid is third and fourth and fifth stories of ADUs.
Right.
But to utilize the space with inside the box of the building appropriately. So that could be a consideration, step away from a height number, call it two stories, and leave it at that.
Sounds good to me. A 30 feet will make it, so. And our houses are 35, so.
Further questions on this section? We're done with height? All right, on to the next. Thank you.
All right. Now we're moving to water requirements. Staff did reach out to Riverside Highland Water Company. We spoke to Don Huff and Craig Gutchen. They did, they're also updating the requirements, and this is just to let you guys know that we want to make sure that our requirements are consistent with Riverside Highland Water. They're going to have their board meeting next week on April 28, and they are requiring, requiring a separate connection for each unit. So for our water requirements, and this is on packet page 24 and 25, the section is 18.69.050. It states that the city shall not require a separate utility connection between an accessory dwelling unit or a junior accessory dwelling unit and the utility, or impose a related, related connection fee or capacity charge for units located entirely within a primary dwelling unit, unless the accessory dwelling unit or the junior accessory dwelling unit was constructed with a new single-family home. And then we have a separate section, section B, that states that except as provided in subdivision A, accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units shall have a separate connection to the main water service line in the street, and the applicant shall submit plans for such lines to the Riverside Highland Water Company for review and approval, and the applicant shall comply with the objective standard requirements of the Riverside Highland Water Company for the construction and operation of the water lines. And these requirements are in line with what they are requiring as well. So if you have an ADU or a junior ADU that is constructed within an existing single-family residence, you're not required to have a separate connection. But if you are doing a separate ADU, then you will have to have a separate connection for that unit. And now we're open to comments on this section.
Questions? Nope. All right. We're good on water and sewer. Oh, wait. Councilmember Wilson?
This begs the question of a companion issue, and that is, it's good that we're addressing sewer and water, and that all works. I think the question becomes, what about dry utilities? So you've got intelligence transmitting, you've got power, and you've got gas, and then you also have, I hope you don't have gas, but anyway, you have that, and then you've got one other item. Oh, yes. What are you going to do with the mail as well? Because it's all in one kind of lump. It's all tied to your single-address scenario. So we're going to have to probably tie what we do to what the post office will allow, and then we can gear around whether they're separate services, or whether they're, whether they're necessary, or whether they're required.
I lived in one of these in college, and my...
Commissioner Susanna?
Oh, sorry. And my address was 2009 and a half, is how they solved it. And the way it worked is it was an old Victorian house, and then I was in the back, and I was, the main house was 2009, I was 2009 and a half, and then the other ADU in there was 2007, because there wasn't a house next door. So that's one way to do it, is to make it a half, or for the mail requirements.
Is that our, is that our responsibility to do that, or is that the responsibility of the property owner that is building these additional units to work with the post office to make that happen?
The city does assign the address to the units, and we can assign an address for an attached or a detached ADU.
Cannot, or you can?
We can. We can do that. We can assign, except for a junior ADU, because those are within the home constraints. But if we do an ADU whether attached or detached, we can assign an address. And we do that through our Building and Safety Division.
Okay. Further, Mr. City Manager?
Just a real clarification, that actually, it's recommended that we do assign, if it has a separate front door, that it has a separate address, whether those are ABCDs as some cities use, or halves and quarters, because that way, if fire department comes, they know which door to go to instead of knocking on every door in the place. So we would recommend that they at least be assigned separate addresses as separate units.
Okay. And do we have a convention for doing that in the city, or is that something that has to be created?
I don't know our convention, but it always has to be approved by the post office. And in other places, it's ABCDs, and the half and quarter addresses are used for the meters and electric meters on the street and those kind of things.
Okay. Further questions? Councilmember Wilson?
Again, another linkage, unfortunately, and that is, we're looking at now a state-imposed minimum yard, side yard of four feet. Now, we can't play with that. In an ADU circumstance, it's a minimum four feet. We can make it bigger, but we can't make it smaller. If most people are going to grind down to a four-foot, we're talking about a fully-loaded fire department guy running down the side yard, trying to get to that unit that's in the back as fast as he can through four feet worth of clutter. At this time, we are not requiring fire sprinklers to that additional unit. I think it's something that we really need to consider for safety reasons, because by the time, you know, if it's, 60 seconds can make the difference on a heart attack, what's going to happen with a fire? I've seen houses burned down in two minutes.
Does new construction from this point forward require sprinklers? I thought it did.
No, the new construction is not required to do fire sprinklers regardless of how far you have to go down the yard.
Mr. City Manager?
If I recall, the law, the law is clear that we cannot require fire sprinklers unless we require it on the existing structure already. So we can't impose anything more stringent upon the ADU than what's already there. And the four-foot setback is the minimum setback, so we can't tell, we can't say it needs to be five, seven, or 10 feet. I agree with your concept, not just for the firemen to run through there, but to put a ladder on the side of the building and get onto the roof. That's a pretty steep climb.
Now, does that also carry for a two-story condition?
It does not make a distinction.
And I think a three-story then goes up for width, if I remember right.
That's why typically a building code or zoning code has a five-foot setback, and the second story has a 10-foot setback, and the third story has, to give that, that room for that slope. But as far as sprinklers, we cannot, we cannot make any more conditions stringent than what's on the existing structure.
Okay. Now, what about new construction?
If it's part of our existing code, we can require that. We cannot single out ADUs to say ADUs have to have sprinklers, a regular house does not. It has to be consistent with the construction throughout the rest of the city.
Thank you.
Mayor Protim?
This is kind of going back with Councilmember Wilson, but, you know, so are we going to have a requirement for a separate electrical? And then the big push in the state is green, so are they going to be allowed to have solar systems on the thing? So, I know it has to carry so much. So is all that going to be in here, or is it already in here, but the electrical and, basically, all utilities?
The electrical hasn't been included in the ordinance yet. That would be something that is typically addressed at the building stage. Once we go to the Building and Safety, they do check with the Southern California Edison about complying with those requirements. We could put some requirements already in our ordinance based on what you just mentioned.
Yeah, I'd just like to see everything written down on there, black and white. So, but, so, yeah, that's just my concern on those things, issues. And I, and that's all I have. I have another question, but it's out of this section, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. Further questions on this section?
Do you want to clarify?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Drew?
Are we going to talk about the sewer deceptic here, or are you going to move, is that coming further?
It's coming, it's coming right now. It's the next topic. But our building official, Luis Cordia, he just wanted to make some clarifications.
Good evening, Luis Cordea, building official. Regards to the electrical question, so that's something we will go ahead and catch during plan check. So we'll look, of course, at the electrical loads of the existing service panel. If required, you know, if you need a sub-panel or if a second service meter is required. So we will look at that during plan check per DNEC, National Electrical Code, and the California Electrical Code. In regards to solar panels, it is required. So any existing, any new accessory dwelling units or attached accessory dwelling units, ADUs, do require solar panels to be installed.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
Since your Building and Safety guy is here, I'd like to refer the question to you. There had been some discussion about Public Works involvement in the sewer capacity to be able to provide for a secondary unit or whatever. And isn't the process, and I'm asking this in a question, isn't your understanding of the process that on private property, doesn't it need to be a Building and Safety plumbing calculation to determine whether or not the capacity is there that can be hooked to before it hits the Y down at the sewer? And then on top of that, we also, we've, we've lumped in the septic tank consideration. And I'd like to call attention to that, because when we think we have a lot, a big lot, we don't necessarily have a big lot. And in this case especially. The code specifies, and I don't know if this is a California state requirement, or if it's a, something we added on, but it says that if you have a septic tank, say in your backyard, not all of them are, and there's a possibility that you might have to replace it eventually, you have to plan for that. And you can't put the septic tank in the middle of something that's going to have a living space over the top of it. So it then limits some of the space that you might be able to use to be able to put that, you know, ADU or, you know, J, well, actually, it'd just be the ADU in. On top of that, my understanding is the other agency that has to work with that is the Health Department and not Public Works. Health Department has to see the perk tests, and then has to determine whether or not in their overall scheme, you know, county-wise for that matter, and the area, the terrain that it's, then, and you can verify this for me, that the perk test is there and that the system can actually work. Otherwise, they're stuck, and we're talking about a lot of money. Because you're going to have to run a sewer line all the way out to the main.
Or add a new septic tank.
And I am a great believer in being accurate, because attorneys make us do this, accurate in our language. Because if we are ambiguous in one way or the other, you'll get an attorney up there somewhere that will work that until the city, or we, or the, or the customer loses. And so I think it's something, it's important to distinguish who's responsible for it, and how it's going to happen, and how they're going to get to the end. Okay?
Good, great question. So in regards to who's responsible, yes. Anything that's within right-of-way public sewage system, that's typically responsibility of Public Works, city engineer. Anything that's onsite, private sewage systems, septic systems, onsite plumbing, usually that would be followed under California Plumbing Code. And California Plumbing Code Appendix H does cover these private sewage systems. So, you know, we can always, that will be under the billing officials' review. So that would be something from the billing department, and also with the Health Department as well, that will coordinate with the approval process. And then, so we will, we would basically overlap our reviews, to make sure that they're in compliance. And regard, and also to make sure that the, that the percolation tests are okay, are approved. So we're okay to have that septic. Now, for location, yeah, so we won't allow, we wouldn't allow any septic tanks right underneath livable space. So they would be located in a separate area within the lot. Now, if it's not feasible, or let's say, you know, we can't, it can't be done, the code does allow other alternatives that we can use. So, you know, we could probably talk with a, an engineer, and, you know, they'll probably come up with something, a separate design.
Okay, so my understanding would be that we would revise the language of the ordinance to actually show that information, rather than lead somebody in the wrong direction.
Yeah, so that, that could be something that we can do.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Alanis.
Thank you. Actually, with the covering of the septic tank, you wouldn't be able to with any other alternative, because you have to have access to actually pump out the tanks. And then as far as the Health Department, unfortunately, because of AB 85, the county no longer has jurisdictions over septic, so you'd have to go to the Regional Board for, for guidance.
Okay, further questions? Chair Drew?
In the addition issue with, with, with septic systems, we had a pretty good discussion about this with Commissioner Alanis, with his background, with the public health. When you have a septic system, there's a, there's a time limit to that system. And then you have to be able to move it to another area that would pass a perk test. And we had no standards established to be able to identify these areas. So before construction could be done, alternative areas, we were recommending be located in case the septic system failed and had to be moved that couldn't be built on. And I don't know where that is still in the planning process or not. And I do understand, we don't have many homes here in the Grand Terrace area with septic systems, but there is some, and it would be quite lengthy distance for them to reach a main sewer system. So I think anybody with a septic system has to be looked at pretty crucially by staff before they're allowed to build. Thank you.
Councilmember Allen, and then Alanis.
Commissioner-
Alanis.
No.
Drew.
Drew alluded to my question, but my, you know, we keep talking about the septic system, and I, I, we as a city, we have a sewer system, and I just can't imagine why we still have, you know, residences that, that use a septic system when we have a-
Because they didn't hook up to sewer yet.
Yeah, I understand, that's, that's the obvious answer, but, you know, it's-
And it's expensive to do. And so, there's, there has not been an incentive for them to change.
How, like, how, what, how many can there be? Can't be very much, only a handful, so.
Okay.
You know?
Good question. Commissioner Alanis?
Actually, that was my question, do we have inventory of homes that are still on septic?
No, I, we actually, staff reached out to Colton Wastewater Sewer. We requested a list for tonight. They were not able to produce it. I'm hoping we can have that ready to be included within our documentation when we adopt the ordinance, so we can reflect those sewers, septic systems that we still have in the city of Grand Terrace. But we don't have a count.
But what, what we're looking from Colton is what's on sewer, so we can deduct what's still on septic?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Any more questions on sewer systems? We're ready to move on.
Okay, so we skipped the sewer part, which was the next part, so should I just skip this part since it's already been discussed? Okay. Now, we're going to talk about the tree replacement. We, this section could be either revised or deleted if the council and commission desire. We had requirement, we had a requirement that if the construction of an accessory dwelling unit or a junior accessory dwelling unit will result in the removal of one or more trees with a trunk diameter of six inches or greater, then as a condition of obtaining a certificate of occupancy, the owner shall plant a new 24-inch box tree on, on the side for each tree that is being removed. And the proposed project site shall, shall have a minimum of one tree per unit that is being constructed. Would the commission and, with the council and the commission would like to change this section?
I want to know where the 20-foot inch box tree requirement came from.
You know, that's just the number we came up with. We can be more specific with the size. We can actually include a caliper size for the tree and a height size for the tree, if that's more adequate.
Councilmember Allen?
Is it possible that this requirement could prevent someone from being able to complete an ADU? Could, could, could this requirement of them saying, well, if I put the ADU up, I've got to take a tree out. I won't have a place for a new tree to grow anyway, but you're going to make me grow one. Could this, could, could this stop a project?
No, it couldn't. We still have to allow the project.
Okay.
Okay, further questions? I'm fine with that. It's a big tree, though. Is the, is the purpose of requiring such a big tree to replace shade for shade for power consumption issues? I, I'm just, I'm still going back to my first question, is where did the requirement come from, and what was the thinking behind it?
The thinking behind it was just to address, if typically if there's a tree on a residence, it's probably a mature tree that has been there for many years. And the trees that are being replaced are not going to be of the same size and produce the same shade that the previous tree typically been removed.
And if the property owner wanted to cut down their tree without building an ADU, would we require them to replace it?
No, we wouldn't.
Okay, so that's, that's my point. We're, we're requiring certain things of property owners that I don't know that we really have the, the ability to do it, or, or that it would be the right thing. Councilmember Wilson?
Mayor, you brought up a good point. First and foremost, the 24-inch box tree is an arbitrary designation, and it's something that evolved in the various jurisdictions as a desirable size for a street tree. And that's actually what happens. In the public way, we see at least a street tree that gets installed as a condition of occupancy, and shortly thereafter, everybody cuts them down or throws them away, or, or whatever. I didn't. I've still got way too many trees in my, on my lot, and I like it that way. I think it might be a little bit overstepping to require even a 24-inch box, although I will say that 24-inch box has a, a, a size of about that big.
Because it's the box around it.
So it's not as big as you'd think it is. 24-inch box allows for a root ball that's sufficient to be able to survive. And the problem is, is it 15-gallon trees? They come out in a little can about this big, and the first wind will knock them over or break them, and they're easy to run over with a truck. So it was explained to me that that's why a 24-inch box tree is usually what's specified. In this case, I think we're doing a sentimental thing, where we're saying, okay, if you've got to cut down a 36-inch, you know, tree in your backyard that's really nice, and then put in a 24-inch box, at least we're doing kind of a, a mea culpa on the fact that we are cutting down more trees than we need to. I believe that we can leave this to a landscape plan consideration. Because are we not going to require some kind of irrigation and landscape plan for the ADU? I, I, I know it's not necessary through the state law, but I think in our, in our laws, anytime you've got open area, you have to protect it from erosion and so on. And the best way that happens is to put turf down or to pave it, either way. So one way or the other, you're either going to end up with a tree well, or again, end up with a tree well with grass around it, or a ground cover, or DG. So I think it's something that we don't have to categorize in this unless it's a state requirement.
It's not a state requirement.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I, I agree with Mr. Wilson. I mean, we didn't have Taco Bell put a new tree up when they cut that big one down, so. I'll see what this box tree, and, yeah, I don't know if it's, you want to do it to landscape, who knows what's going to happen on there? So I, I, I think we should just eliminate the trees altogether on this requirement. It's my opinion.
Commissioner Alanis, you're shaking your head. Do you have something you wanted to add?
I can't give you a good reason for, but, I mean, we're environmental friendly, it's, we're, we're, if someone wants to cut down their tree, because they want to cut down their tree, that's one thing. But if someone's doing this to create new habitable space, I mean, they should be responsible for replacing it. I know, it doesn't, it's not a good argument, but.
Commissioner Susanya?
Well, and we know from our environmental studies that every bit of concrete and every bit of roofing makes things hotter, and every tree we have makes things cooler. So it really doesn't make sense in that res, it make, we need to be careful of what we take out that we replace. And, and I think the 24-inch box tree, I, I like the idea because it means you're putting in a tree that's mature enough to survive, and won't, you know, like, fall over with the first wind or whatever. And, or we can, instead of saying the 24-inch box tree, you know, pick a mature tree to put in somewhere in your thing. But we have to be really careful about that, especially because as we fill in these spaces, when we lose more and more green and more and more that, we're heating ourselves up. And so we really need to, that's one thing to keep, and I understand it's kind of an aesthetic and a tree hugger thing, but at the same time, it's also about keeping us cool.
All right. And so here's my question again, because I think you already answered this. If the requirement for a tree would preclude somebody from building their ADU, we're waiving that requirement?
Yes, we would have to waive that requirement, because we cannot preclude the construction of an ADU unit that meets the minimum standards of the state.
All right, so to the points that were being made before, we're just going to waive them if this would stop, if this would stop somebody from building an ADU, which doesn't get to the points that you were making. And so I think we have a, I have an inherent problem with, with all of it this point. I, I think encouraging trees and, and looking at a landscaping plan to make sure that things are, are as they should be is one thing, but to make a hard and fast rule that a certain kind of tree has to go in is, is heading down a path that, that I don't think is the right path. I'm, I'm not saying cut down trees and don't replace them, but if you're going to waive that for somebody else, then that causes problems. It's either a requirement or it's not.
Right. That is a good point. And also, I want to clarify a point that Commissioner, Council Wilson made regarding the landscape. When we do ADUs, we don't require a landscape plan for ADUs. You already have a single-family residence constructed that already has, prepared a landscaping plan with the construction of a single-family residence. So for these kind of units, we wouldn't be requiring a landscaping plan.
And currently, if somebody cuts down a tree to build an ADU, are you requiring them to replace it with another tree?
Currently, we are not requiring that.
So this would be a new requirement?
This would be a new requirement.
Okay. Further questions? Commissioner Susanya?
One of the reasons with the Taco Bell tree that people brought up, we have a plan to replant, the Barton specific is in there. So that's why they are going to be, that tree is going to be replaced. So that's why we didn't require Taco Bell to do it, because we have another plan for later.
If, may I add, also, new developments like the Taco Bell, they are required to do street trees. And there's a minimum of street tree requirements per 40 square feet. They're required to do one street tree, and they did comply with that as well.
Further discussion on this section? All right, please continue. Councilmember Wilson?
I disagree with the idea that we don't require a irrigation and landscape plan. I think we probably should require a site plan. And in that site plan, we can have the person draw in, or whoever the architect is, draw in kind of an semblance of a, where the driveway goes and the rest of the furniture and stuff around the area. But I can't think that we can get away with skirting the erosion control requirements in the grading, in Section 70 in the grading code. So I got to think that there's going to have to be something that provides from the, from the builder or the, the owner, what they're going to do to be able to take care of it, whether it's DG, or whether it's gravel, or whatever, raked dirt, I don't know. I don't think that'd work too well. But I think they're still going to have to prove to us that they're going to inhibit the future erosion. Other than you're, other than that, you're going to end up with a dirt pad around the, the ADU, and that's not allowed.
That is a good point, and we could add- That is a good point, and we could add a landscape requirement for ADUs that are either attached or detached because they are going to have a separate entrance to this unit.
Or maybe even an eight and a half by 11 for that matter. I mean, it doesn't have to be something fabulous. It could even be something that a contractor could work up as a, because contractors under the land, under the contract code say that irrigation and landscape guys can design their own stuff. So that could be part of their deal where they'd say, "Okay, we're going to put lines in here," and the other part of it is, "Here's what the landscaping is kind of going to look like." Because this is really, what you call it, aesthetics. But in the long run, the bottom line is keeping the stuff from blowing away.
Since we are reducing the landscaping because we're building these units on the land, it wouldn't be unreasonable to ask for a landscaping that enhances the remaining landscaping of the existing parcel.
Okay, thank you.
And we could encourage trees. Mr. City Attorney.
Mayor, the only concern I have, and we'll look into that, is under the law, we can only impose objective standards. So we can't get into subjective, "It looks good," aesthetic, you know, subjectivity. That's what we have to shy away from.
The objective is a plan.
And if that's it, that's fine. They could submit a plan, but we can't make a decision on the ADU as to whether it looks good, whether it's, you know...
Well, you could have things such as there would be a plan that'll be a method for making sure that, or that the dirt doesn't blow, that there's, that there's some sort of mechanism that keeps it intact, whether it's DG or grass or other plants or...
Right.
And you're going to have to have it for your percent of coverage, anyway. So if it's just a very simple little sketch, most people could do that.
Commissioner, Chair Drew.
Thank you, ma'am. And this is for the city attorney. It is written in there that even though, they could even do a modular home and have a crane drop it in the back if they want, but it has to meet certain specifications, match colors of the house, certain aesthetic things to make it look appropriate for the neighborhood. So I don't think it's that far of a stretch to be able to say that we're going to look for a landscaping to make sure that it remains in the neighborhood.
And to, well, what constitutes the neighborhood? That's a question, like in the example you gave, does it match colors? Yes or no? Check mark. Does it match the height restrictions? Check mark. If we can check mark yes or no, then that constitutes an objective standard. If it goes beyond that, that's where it kind of gets a little questionable. So that's why I just want to make sure that if we do impose this requirement, we're still consistent with that objective yes or no check mark analysis.
Well, there's certain people that live in neighborhoods that have allergies to specific things. So they moved into this neighborhood because it was, would benefited their health to live there. Now you have someone that moves in that has a dirt lot that's going to raise all kinds of things. It can cause lung disease, it can cause all other things, and it's a benefit, not a benefit to those folks to live in this community. Are we going to now tell them, "Sorry, they're allowed to do this," and affect their ability to live and healthy?
Depends how it's written. It depends how it's written.
From what I hear from the city attorney is, we can require the landscaping, it just needs to be objective measurements of what they're going to do.
Correct.
And so that, that's on staff to come up with the objective measurement, but we could give the direction that there be a landscape plan that must come with this.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
If I can just weigh in quickly, one, one simple way to do it, maybe this has kind of already been suggested, you can just require a certain percentage of the ground is covered with plants rather than dirt, for example. I mean, something just like, you've got to have at least, you know, X percentage has to be plant cover to be objective and would prevent a dirt lot.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, you had comment?
Oh, he made my point for me. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. We're well covered. All right, anything further before we move on to the next section? All right, please continue.
All right, and then we're moving to design standards that we are already discussing. So we have added a Section 18.69.06. We are requiring that the architectural design and detail, the roofing material, the exterior colors, and the finished material of the accessory dwelling units or the junior accessory dwelling units shall be the same as those of the primary dwelling. We're also included a section that is specific to manufacturer home requirements. If materials to match the primary dwelling unit are not available, then commercially available for a manufactured home, then the finished materials shall be at least of the same color as the same finished materials as the primary residence. We're also including that the roof shall be a minimum 16-inch overhang and shall have a minimum pitch of not less than two inches vertical rise for each 12 inches of horizontal run. And any mechanical equipment associated with the manufactured home shall be located so it's not visible from the public streets or from the adjoining properties. Does the council or commission have any comments or changes on this section?
Commissioner Allenies.
Just a question, what type of mechanical equipment is associated with manufactured homes?
That would be your AC equipment. A lot of manufactured homes have it on top of the roof, which we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to disguise it in there.
Got it, thank you.
Further questions? Councilmember Wilson.
This one's going to, this is a prickly pear here, because unfortunately, this is where we get into barns that don't look like barns. And unfortunately, we like them to look like barns. When I built mine, I had to pay a pretty penny to find the material, and it was the last of its kind. But I wanted something that made my house, enhanced my house. What I'm afraid of is that people are going to automatically go to, you know, something that was built by Home Depot and really doesn't make the grade, and it's going to affect people's property values. I have a couple of questions. First of all, one of the things that qualifies us to be able to do an ADU or whatever, actually unqualifies us, is that you can't do it in an historic area. And you also can't require it in a high, oh, I'm sorry, a very high fire zone. I'd like to know what the definition of that is and if it coincides with what we understand under our general plan as a high fire zone or a high fire safety zone.
Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, the high fire safety zone is defined by CAL FIRE. They have maps that map that area out. I don't know that any part of the city, maybe parts up against the Blue Mountain might be, but as defining the entire city as a high fire safety zone would be really problematic, would have to go through CAL FIRE. The same thing for the historic district. There is, we can declare a historic district. A part of that needs to be certified. I'm trying to remember the state agency. There is a state agency that says this is historic and puts, agrees that this is the place, and then we can deal with it as that. So we have to be fairly careful to say the new houses are historic. They're not. We have to be fairly specific on that as well.
I think you're right in your guess. I think Foxborough, a good percentage of Foxborough has been designated a high fire zone, in that it's not, you know, this distinction or the definition doesn't tell people that live in that area that they are not allowed, because it just leaves it up to the forestry service. I don't know if our general plan item was determined by the forestry service or not, but I'm 100% sure that it was determined by the people that protect, you know, do our fire service for us. So I'm going to think that one and two are the same.
I am positive that the wildland interface is controlled by CAL FIRE because I live in it, the other side of the street from my house is not, and I get to pay the extra fire insurance for living on my side of the street. And there, I've tried to change that personally, it doesn't work.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, I'm glad you brought that up, and I'll bring it short. The, when this fire location or the high fire zone was determined, it was determined by a former employee who decided arbitrarily to change the boundaries. And if you look at the boundaries that were actually entertained by the forestry service versus somebody making it easier to find the street lines, the two aren't the same. And so there's a circuit that goes out every, around July 4th every year that's not accurate. The actual document says the limitations, and it gives the limitations of where they are. Reason why I know that is because I got plopped into that fire zone. And that means I would technically not be able to do fireworks. Anybody that knows me, it'd be a real problem. So I think it's some, it's a part of a larger picture that needs to be fixed, but for the time being, we have a lot of people that are in this high fire zone. And of course, our emergency management plan, that's a 5% of our, you know, watch out, it's going to get you kind of thing. So it would seem to me that that would be important. In this deal with the roof on item B, I believe the correct word there, roof shall have a minimum 16-inch overhang, not overhand?
I'm so sorry.
There are a few of those peppered in and out, but I know that's a lot of words. So you might want to go through there and just kind of check, because spell check doesn't always get them. But that's overhang. So you've got a 16-inch overhang, you have a minimum pitch of not less than two inches vertical rise for 12. That's known as the two and 12. The problem with two by 12 is too tongued. Number one, two and 12 is not going to match any roof you've got anywhere in the city, unless it's flatter than a pancake. Second, you can't use conventional roofing material on a two and 12. So not only are you going to have a flat roof next to something that's pitched, most of them are about six and 12, at least in, in the Foxborough project, but you're also going to have the loveliness of rolled roofing or tar and rock, because you can't, a, anything less than about a four and 12 will not be supported by conventional roofing material. Even if you were not going to do clay, but you were going to do some substitute like fiberglass roofing, which doesn't look bad, next to something that maybe is clay or concrete.
So you're suggesting that the minimum should be higher than that?
I'm suggesting the pitch needs to be equivalent to the, to the house next, next to it, to the primary house, or at least close to it. And the other end of it is, that will cure the material question, because you definitely don't want a flat, flat pitch roof with rolled roofing on it. You'd get all kinds of complaints. And it won't work very well either. That's all.
Commissioner Allenies, and then Chair Drew.
Being that these are standards for manufactured homes, is anything going to be consistent with the primary house? I mean, can we, I'm not really too familiar with manufactured homes, but can you get a pitch close to what you get on a regular SFR? I guess that's just kind of a rhetorical or an open question. I don't know if anyone has the answer.
Does staff have the answer to that?
I do not have the answer for that. Do you have any knowledge on the roof pitch for manufactured homes?
I know you can, sorry, I know you can with modular, but I don't know about the typical roll-on manufacturer, and those are generally fairly flat roofs.
Okay, so we could draw the line and say we don't want flat roofs, right? Chair Drew?
Well, I know in manufactured homes as well as pre-made homes, you can restrict how much pitch they have on them, such as, I ran a resident post up in Northern California. You could never put in a 212 roof up there with the, with the snow loads. So on the manufactured homes, mobile homes, if they had a flat roof mobile home, they had to build a pitched porch over the mobile home. Actually, I liked it, it looked pretty nice. But you can make those restrictions. But the other part that we're, that I don't appreciate here is we're, can't say anything about the four-foot clearance, by understanding. Then we put a 16-inch overhang. We have a fireman that needs to put a ladder up. He's now got a two and a half foot space to work with. There's no way safely he can put that ladder and climb that ladder without a couple of people holding that ladder while he goes up it. And still, that wouldn't meet OSHA requirements. So are we going to require the fire department to go in the neighbor's yard, to use their yard to get the right angle for the ladder to get on someone's roof? I mean, is this 16-inch overhang part of the four-foot clearance? Or is it the vertical walls that is the four-foot clearance?
That is a very good point, and we could make, the overhang is typically not measured by the setback, it's measured by the wall.
Okay, so in other words, we're reducing now the availability for the fire department to be able to say, does the fire department or the fire marshals have any regulations that would prevent such a thing as a four-foot setback?
Now, we reached out to the fire department, and they would follow the minimum setback requirements that are stated by the building code. That's what they said. And I think the building code minimum is three feet.
Three feet? All right, thank you.
Commissioner Allenies.
Is the 16-inch overhang a requirement for standard ADUs that are not manufactured? Because, I mean, if you, I don't know if manufactured homes can be two stories. Is that, okay, then never mind.
Just to weigh in here for a second, the place where these requirements came from, if you're wondering, is from cities' existing roof design requirements for manufactured homes. We just brought them straight over from that section and put them in this ordinance, assuming they had been, you know, sort of looked at previously. Not, not saying that they can't be changed, but that's where they can go.
Thank you. Further questions on this? All right, please continue.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other development standards the council or commission would like to add to ADUs and JADUs to this ordinance that we haven't covered?
Councilmember Wilson.
Just one thing I'd like to specify, that our distance between buildings should be per the fire code. So whether we want to do it arbitrarily as a 15-foot minimum or whatever we want to do, and I'll sneak into it from this standpoint. Most of the lots in the city are some graduation of a 7,200-square-foot lot, at least in the last, say, 40 years, because we had a 7.2 ordinance. And so you couldn't really build a 5,000-square-foot lot in the city unless it was some kind of a CUP or a special, special district. If it's just a standard 7,200-square-foot lot, think of this, got a 25-foot setback to the front of the garage. If the house is even with the garage, you got a 40-foot, kind of a, somewhere between a 35 and 40-foot depth of the house. You go 15 feet because we want to have separation between it and the building. Right now, where are we up to? We're 25, 40, 65, 80. You have to have a four-foot yard, at least a minimum four-foot yard separation. What it leaves room for is two eight-foot by 50-foot trailers tied together, basically a double-wide trailer to attain your 800 minimum square feet. That's what's going to be there in probably 50 to 75% of the houses, if you're going to make the 800-square-foot minimum. That's just for a studio or a one-bedroom. That's what you got. So that's what, that's, that's the attractiveness that we're working with. And unfortunately, when you stab a septic tank in there that doesn't have room to be able to do a replacement, you've got a really worse condition. The resulting lots are pretty hairy to try to build on. So I think most of these things that probably will come in from a practical sense are going to be oversized lots. And from that standpoint, I think that's why we have to have a calculation for them. That's coming up, I guess, on your SB 9 ordinance. So I just wanted to, you know, wanted to bring that up in relation to the Table 1 requirements, because that's what you're really looking at. A pair of, if you've ever seen a pair of single wides tied together, that's what you got. you got. In your backyard with a fifteen-foot space in between.
All right.
The reason why I ask is because there was a section in the co, in this proposed ordinance that, and I think it was number six, shape of parcel. What happened to it?
That is going to be review on our SB nine section.
Ah.
We get there.
I was kinda, because I had it on my phone, but then when I looked at the one on our, on the computer, it was gone.
We, we will cover that.
Okay.
I would just like to clarify that the fifteen-foot separation between buildings is not a requirement of state law, so if you believe it would result in something that's undesirable, that could be taken down.
Gotcha.
All right, we'll move forward.
All right, thank you. May I have the second presentation? All right, so now we're going to review the Senate Bill Nine legislation requirements first, and then we'll move into our ordinance requirements. So Senate Bill number one was, I mean, number nine, was signed on September sixteen, twenty-twenty-one. It became effective on January first, twenty-twenty-two. It requires local agencies to allow the ministerial approval on SB nine projects. Per legislation, the city is required to allow the construction of up to two primary dwelling units per parcel in a single-family residential zone. Under SB nine, uh, single-family residential lots may be split in half to create two separate smaller parcels. The state law has established many requirements, it does allow us to establish objective standards. SB nine projects are permitted on our single-family residential zoning. As you are familiar, Hillside Residential are one-dash-twenty, very low-density residential are one-dash-ten, low-density, and they are one-seven-point-two, single-family density residential. Those four two parcels are the ones where SB nine projects would be supported. SB nine projects are prohibited in historic districts, in areas where earthquake fault zones are located, and land that is designated as wetland, land designated as high-fire severity hazard zones, hazardous waste sites, flood hazard areas, protected farmland, habitat for protected species land, and land under a conservation easement. Under the legislation, the city is allowed to, to deny a proposed SB nine development project or a two-lot split if the building official makes a finding based on evidence that the proposed project would have a specific adverse impact upon the public health and the safety of the physical environment, and for which there's no feasible method to mitigate or avoid the specific adverse impact. The law requires that units built under SB nine cannot involve the demolition or alteration of housing that is dead restricted to affordable housing, housing under rent control, or housing that has been occupied by a tenant within the last three years. For this last one, if there's a tenant, the city cannot allow more than twenty-five percent of the exterior, uh, the structure of the walls to be demolished. SB nine legislation has a maximum requirement of two primary units per property. The city can only impose the four-foot side and rear setback requirement. SB nine units can not be rented for terms that are less than thirty-one days, and the city cannot enforce standards that prevent the construction of up to two primary units that are at least eight-hundred square feet in size. The city also, by state legislation, can only require one parking spot per unit located on the parcel. There's exemptions if the parcel is within one-half walking distance of a transit corridor or a major transit stop, or if there's a car, shared vehicle located within one block of the parcel. State law also requires that a two-lot subdivision shall not result in a parcel smaller than forty percent of the lot area of the original parcel, and that the remaining parcel must be a minimum of twelve-hundred square feet in size. Per legislation requirements, vacant lots are not eligible for urban lot splits. Any urban lot split cannot be further subdivided if has been previously subdivided through an SB nine, um, process. No more than two units are permitted on any parcel created by a lot split, and only residential uses are permitted. The owner of the parcel must leave in one of the resulting parcels for a minimum of three years. Easements must be dedicated, there must be public service and facilities, and also access to the public right of way. Urban lot splits must comply with requirements of the Subdivision Map Act and the city standards, and urban lot splits need to be approved ministerially. And now, this concludes the overview on the legislation requirements, and we're going to start the discussion. And we're also going to start with the size requirements. Under SB nine, a lot can have either one or two primary units, detached or attached. For an attached, for example, could be a duplex. The city can set a size requirement that is no less than eight-hundred square feet for SB units. Things to consider, some of the units will be, uh, constructed in normal-sized lots, other units will be constructed in substandard-sized lots that result from SB nine lot splits. The city may wanna have different size standards depending whether the lot is a standard parcel or a lot-split parcel. SB nine is going to impact the lot size, uh, density within our single-family residential zoning. We have created this table, which is also included in your staff reports as Table Number Four, to illustrate the lot size reduction. And the first column, we have our zoning, and we start with our higher parcels, which is the Hillside Residential. It has a minimum lot size of one acre, and it just goes all the way down to our smaller parcels, which is the single-family residential, which, which is seventy-two-hundred square feet. We have on the next column, the minimum lot sizes, and we have included an SB nine lot subdivision possible options. The state legislation allows a minimum of forty percent reduction for a subdivision. So you would have a forty percent, if you're going to subdivide your home, forty percent is the, the minimum that you can reduce your lot. You will end up with a forty percent and a sixty percent lot. You can also do maybe split your lot in half and have two fifty percent size lots. So if we focus on our last, uh, entry here, which is the single-family residential, these are the smaller parcels, the seventy-thousand-two-hundred square feet. If we do a forty percent subdivision, it would, it would be a two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty square feet lot size. That would be our smaller projected, um, size if we do an SB lot nine, uh, SB lot, sorry, SB nine lot subdivision on our smaller parcels. And knowing how the lot size will be impacted, the council and commission may want to, um, we have some recommendations that the commission and the council might want to, to review. Recommendation one is, um, that the first primary unit on a lot will have no maximum size requirement, but will only be subject to the setback, maximum lot coverage, and other development standards applicable to the lot. That means they have to abide by the zoning of the underlying zone district. And within that, the second primary unit to be constructed on the lot will be limited to eight-hundred square feet. And a new construction of a duplex, um, which is two units that are attached, can be limited to twelve-hundred square feet per unit. Another recommendation can be to create two separate standards, one for standard-sized parcels, which is the first one. The first primary unit on a lot will have no maximum size requirement, but will only be subject to setback, maximum lot coverage, and other development standards applicable, once again, to, to the lot, depending on the zoning. And a substandard-sized parcel, that's a secondary section, that the first primary unit on a lot resulting from an SB nine lot split will be limited to twelve-hundred square feet. The numbers stated in these two recommendations are samples, we can adjust those size requirements, and now we're open for discussion on this section.
All right, questions on this section? Chair Giroux?
Thank you, ma'am. So when the lots are split, and they're gonna be detached, is there driveway requirements to each one of these lots, separate driveways?
Not driveway requirement, because we are not requiring them to do a car garage. They are only required to do a parking space that has to be on the site where the unit is constructed, and this is per unit. And there's, um, a way to waive this requirement by the state is if they, by the legislation. If they leave within half a mile distance from a bus stop, then they are not required to do that parking. Therefore, um, the driveway would not be. Are you meaning that, you mean in the lot split?
Yeah, I understand the car restrictions if, if, if they're within a transit and share a car. But there's no, the properties cannot be sold separately at any time. They have to stay, if one, the front house is sold, the rear house has gotta go for sale as well.
Okay, yes, if you have an SB nine unit on an existing parcel with a single-family residence, they are on the same lot, you cannot sell them separately.
The split lot with two detached units can't be sold separately?
That can be sold separately. And if you allowed me to take back what I said earlier, if you have the lot split, then yes, you would have to have a, an access for, for the secondary lot that you are creating.
Okay, so there would be a, a separate driveway for the second, for the lot split?
For the lot split.
So with a seventy-two-hundred-square-foot lot, it's gonna be pretty difficult to be able to establish that without complete tear downs of the existing home and putting in two new ones?
It, it would be.
Yeah, because of the setbacks on, of the way our homes are already in, in the seventy-two-hundred area. Then if, when, when the lots are split under SB nine, and they have to tear down and do new construction, it, are we still leaving out the, our existing encroachments that we have, or can we, do we have to follow SB nine? Such as setbacks?
For the SB nine, the setbacks are very similar to the ADUs. We are going to, um, still follow our front setback requirement, depending on the zoning that you're located. It's usually twenty-five for our residential zoning. And for the rear and side setback, we are going to do the four-foot setback requirement by the state.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Wilson?
Uh, can you verify for me the, uh, minimum rear yard setback?
The minimum rear yard setback for the legislation is four feet.
Four feet. Somewhere in my deep, dark memory, I, I seem to think that anything under the five-foot requirement used to require a type fi, or, yeah, a type-five fire resistance material. In other words, a solid block wall. Is that still, I mean, how does that play in this four-foot thing?
Yes, let me have my building official, Luis Cordea, come up on the podium and explain the requirements for the firewalls.
So in regards to your, your question, Councilmember Wilson, uh, yes, so, anything per, uh, section, California Residential Code, Section R three-oh-two-point-one, uh, so there are requirements of a fire-rated construction. So if you are, you have a fire-resistant rated wall, so if your construction is, has a fire, it's, it's fire-rated, so your exterior wall is, uh, fireproof, so fire-rated, and it's less than five feet, that does comply with the restrictions in the California Residential Code.
Okay, thank you. Then can you, uh, so if we're at the four-foot minimum setback, uh, well, actually, having to do with, uh, I think it's the previous, uh, slide, we have some units that are going to be in an area where more than just the, uh, zoning require, or, uh, addresses the amount of units you can put on, or, yeah, the square footage of the units that can be put on a lot. In particular, the hillside zone, where it says RH, it says there technically that you could, a minimum lot size would be one acre per lot. And then, for some reason, there we were showing the forty, fifty, and sixty percent shares, just to get an idea, you know, where things would go. Isn't it true that most of the stuff that's on our hillside designation is also subject to the, uh, topography calculation? And it might be misleading to people that are gonna try to build a tract or houses up there that would, uh, be under the misinterpretation that they can load up those lots at a one per acre, yet they can't, nor can they put in ADUs that are companions, because the topography just flat won't let them do it. Won't let them do the coverage, won't let them do the, the, for example, when you've got a, uh, greater than twenty percent grade, you got a problem. You can't, you can't build the same number of houses on there, one to the acre. You may have twenty acres, and you have to, and you can build one. How are we gonna address that upfront with folks that might wanna do something like that? On topography?
So for topography, um, if the, if the property is unable to accommodate, uh, so let's say there's topography and there's slopes around, and as you were saying, like twenty percent, if it's not feasible and there, it poses a life safety hazard, I believe there's language on there that, uh, the project just will not go through.
So it'd be up to the building official to, to write that letter that says, "We can't, can't do it based on this," or "The findings are this."
Yes, and I think there was a, right there.
Yep.
The city may deny a proposed SB nine development or a lot split if the building official makes a written finding based upon preponderance of the evidence that the proposed project would have a specific adverse impact upon public health and safety or the physical environment, and for which there is no feasible method to satisfactorily mitigate or avoid the specific adverse impact.
See, what I'm concerned about is because attorneys are really good at twisting language, unless you specifically state or link the Section Seventy grading deal into that language, I'm afraid somebody somewhere along the line is gonna work that in a courtroom to the point where they feel as if they are justified in recovering some pretty nasty fees and so on. So somehow, we've got to link, you know, some kind of a caveat that's, that links the language in the, in that portion of the code about hillside and how it reduces the number of units you can put on a lot. I think it's important. Because some people might try to, I know there's a couple of property owners over there that think they're gonna build a hotel on that property. I mean, you know, as far as they're concerned, but they don't know anything about the rest of it. So if we just solve it by linking that language in accordance with, or in accordance with this, I think we're gonna save ourselves some trouble. And though I know this is a SB nine ordinance, but this makes it a less restrictive that I think we can justify. Because it's already in the code, it's already there.
Yes, and you're right. So, uh, if it goes, so let's say, you know, it goes to that point where one, somebody wants to sue the city or say that, you know, we're not justifying, we will have backup. Uh, we, we do have a consultants that are professional civil engineers that will basically justify the decision of the building official.
Okay, now, since you're still up here, not necessarily a related unit, but it also has to do with the shape of the lot. The minimum, minimum front yard setback, I'm sure you're gonna agree from a planning standpoint, should match neighborhood, match the adjacent neighborhood. So I, I know the way the current code is, it's silent on the front yard setback. I don't know if there's a minimum, but unless it's a private street, most of them are about twenty or sixteen or something to accommodate a, you know, at least a most of them are about 20 or 16 or something to accommodate a, you know, at least a car in the driveway. Are, are we going to want to try to address that front yard setback so that there is some consideration already plugged into it that says, you know, you can't do something really wacky like, you know, it's, it's the old, you can't paint your, your house purple just because you like it, argument. So, you know, I think it's important to distinguish.
I don't know that that's in our ordinance.
I don't know, I mean, I don't, do we have any purple houses? Ed, do you know?
I think that's an issue for another time.
Okay, so, but the question is, since it's in that portion of it, do we want to try to, you know, finite it down so that there, you know, isn't any question about driveways? Driveways are a funny item. They aren't really ruled by anything and parking spaces are, obviously, and as in AB nine. But I think it would bear some, you know, some looking into if we can tack it onto something.
Since we are already within that subject, maybe the council and the commission would like to jump into that question. Does the council or the commission prefer a side-by-side lot for subdivisions? Or flag lots, are we okay with flag lots? Or maybe we don't have a preference? For example, the city may impose frontage requirements like you were talking about. We might have a minimum lot width. We might prohibit flag lots. Maybe that's something we could discuss at this time since you brought that point up.
Thank you. And then I think you also brought up one more item in relation to the shape of the parcel and since it's kind of out of there, but it is and it's being considered. How can the shape of the parcel be dictated when the size or shape of the beginning, the prime, beginning lot, which is the way it's termed, is subject to setbacks, open space, driveways, access, and so on? And in that also, how does, how do cul-de-sacs, how are they can, you know, cul-de-sac conditions? I believe you were asking for some kind of direction from us on how the shape of the parcel, you know, would we be interested in, in flag lots or some variation in order to be able to implement access to the overall? And I thought of cul-de-sacs because they're notorious. That's where flag lots usually come from. If you're going to try to pinch another, you know, unit in there. You've got a big pie-shaped lot in the back end of it, you can, you got an access for, for driveway, usually have to have at least a minimum 16-foot throat to the drive.
Thank you for enunciating flag lot. I heard flat lot and it wasn't making sense to me.
So what other feedback do you need from us in relation to the size of the parcel? And so that when you get your other information back, you'll already have all that affirmed?
Based on how we have our, most of our single-family residential zoning, and I think Commissioner Jeru made that point, they are all on the front. And we have the minimum setback of 10 feet on one side and the five minimum setback of five feet on the other side. And most of the lots have the bigger lot size on the back, which would require some kind of major demo to create an access for the back, to create that accessibility. I do see based on that, that probably flag lots is what we would see the most in grand terrace. We would like to see side-by-side lots because it would just make it more organized. It would look better to have every lot to have a frontage to the street. It might not be a feasible requirement based on what we have and the existing conditions for our smaller parcels, the 7,200 square foot sizes. This might not be an issue, as big as an issue for the bigger lot size on the R 20 and the R 10 designations. But it's something to consider.
I think it would depend on the size of the lot and how deep it goes would be the way that I would look at it. Mr. City Manager.
Just a, a consideration from a, from a developer perspective, they love flag lots because they can get more, more yield per acre. From a planning perspective, we're, we're not quite as excited about that because what happens in that back lot is not visible from the street and it becomes a code enforcement problem. It becomes an issue of typically those back lots tend not to be as well-maintained as the front lots. So that's one of those balance points that, that you as a group is, is going to have to give us some direction on.
All right. For the questions or comments on this? I was wondering about the safety of the flag lots, but then again, that, that really is up to the individual that's living in that back lot. But, but I take your meaning as far as the code enforcement, as far as making sure that it stays clean.
Well, it goes, it goes down the road because a flag lot is harder to access from a fire truck to get the hoses in there. If it's tucked back in there from a law enforcement perspective, if there is something going wrong, the officer's walking down a fairly constrained area. So there, there are negatives to the flag lot. On the other side, that, as, as somebody said, that's probably the most developable lots as far as this process.
So if we denied the use of flag lots, that, that changes the ability for a number of people to have a lot split. Chair Jeru.
There, I agree that there's, with the flag lots, for public safety is a big issue. Most of your assaults happen within the driveway on law enforcement responding to these different incidents. It happens approaching the house and then these flag lots with the driveway in the back is just an absolute nightmare as a supervisor. You know, the federal law that passed saying that you could no longer wait for backup, it was just an absolute nightmare rolling from an office and having everybody go head in that direction because you know this house is two lots back. And it just opens up Pandora's box. I am assuming that any of these developments that wanted to be done with the SB nine lot splits would go through the Planning Commission, yes or no?
No, this is a ministerial approval.
So it's all, everything's being done at staff level?
That's correct.
So it'd be critical for us to make?
We make restrictions now?
Restrictions now to control what happens in our community, not just to protect our own community, but the people that we contract with to keep us as safe as possible. In addition, if I can add about this tree thing, I don't know if it's something that we would need to move through the ordinance, Madam Mayor, if we can look at this at the Planning Commission level for an ordinance. Because when you look at the tree issue now with the nation, it's going on, our forest fires and all that stuff, there's no doubt the trees or some type of foliage, whether it be a tree or pollinators or other items that can be put in on someone's property to assist with the environmental. I think we need now more, we need to look at some type of, of process to ensure that we're continuing this environmental recycling of our air and filtering for the environmental stuff, so. I understand for this process.
That would be a separate issue from this particular ordinance, though.
Yes, that's what I'm asking, is if there was something that could be directed by City Council for the Planning Commission to evaluate. Because it's, I know it, we can't enforce it for this, for SB nine, but I'd like to see where we as a city have an opportunity to make some type of corrections for that area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Allen.
Don't, do we get a certain number of carbon credits based on our tree canopy? No? Are we able to? Is that some, not something that?
Not that I know of. And actually, there's been some discussion that tree count should count towards the VMT on new projects, the, the, you sense that the traffic counts. Because that's, that's greenhouse gas driven, but nobody's made that argument stick yet either.
Okay.
What do we want to do with flag lots? Do we want to allow them? If we can, if we can say no, they're not allowed? Is that, is that a direction we want to go?
My vote man would be no on flag lots.
All right, so, so. No, it's just with the lot splits is what we're talking about. Specifically for this, we are saying as a, as a consideration in a lot split, you are, you are not able to create a flag lot situation. I'm, I'm seeing a lot of nodding heads. So that's, that's a direction. Yes, Councilmember Allen.
Can, can we defend that always? You know, for, would, would that be, is that a defendable position from somebody who has a flat, long, narrow lot? Similar to that lot over there that we, that we did the Habitat for Humanity project? Can we defend that, argue that position?
Well, it is an objective standard, so I think in that respect, yes. And we'll look to see if there's any guidance on it, but again, it is an objective standard, so I would say yes.
These lot splits, they're not creating two separate parcels, though, correct? It's just splitting the lot to build extra houses, whereas the Habitat for Humanity homes were on two separate parcels.
So these aren't creating a new parcel by doing a lot split?
No, they're creating a new parcel.
They are creating new parcels, okay. I, I thought they were just splitting it to, to add extra houses. But this is just a, a quick way to do a, a lot split and create two different parcels?
That's correct.
So they're, so they're assigned two different parcel numbers at that point and, okay.
That's my understanding, yes.
Essentially, the issue here is that under existing law, you could split these lots because they would result in substandard sizes. So the state is essentially trumping that and saying regardless of the fact that it would result in substandard sizes, you can now do a lot split.
So that falls, falls right into the barrel I wanted to go for. And that is, first, how, what do we do about consistency with the general plan of the zoning?
We don't.
Now, I know that we are forced into a situation here because the state has man, made a mandate. But we rely a lot on consistency with the general plan of the zoning. Does that all of a sudden get thrown out with a, with a bathwater? Or do we require a person that's going to do this to make a, an, an action or apply for a GPA or a, a ZC?
It's out with the bathwater and, and that is the problem.
Okay, second question, and just as bad. What maps an urban lot split?
A parcel map.
A parcel map. So it is definitely under a parcel map. So in our requirement for application, not only are we going to add a rough landscape plan, but we're also going to advise them that in order to make it a legal lot split, they have to go through a parcel map process. Now, there's a chance they might be able to do a parcel map exemption, but we'll leave that as aside. But the parcel map definitely is a part of that process. And it's a go, again, an extra cost, which gets added to the overall, you know, trying to make this thing affordable. And then my understanding is, and the last piece of that puzzle is, since a, a companion parcel in an, in a lot split can be conveyed to a separate owner, what stands in the way of that when we know the primary building is supposed to be occupied by an owner and yet, and it's supposed to be somehow linked to that ADU? But now they're telling us that we can, you can separately convey that piece. So is there a time limit? Is that three-year time limitation set up for that or what's, what's the deal?
So before we get, and I think we're, this is the same issue we ran into in, in council where there got some confusion. You can have a lot, split that lot into two, two separate lots, and then on each separate lot, you can build the ADU. Once that lot split happens, they are two separate pieces of property, two separate APNs, and can be conveyed and/or sold. The only requirement is that whoever's in one of those reside there for three years. But with that then, they can then do ADUs in the back. The ADU cannot be conveyed or sold, it's still part of that parcel.
Okay.
Just one clarification, they don't have to live there, they just have to sign an affidavit stating that they intend to live there.
Yeah, so they don't have to, they just say they intend to, yeah. I don't know how you can keep them hostage in the house either.
Okay, last question. How do we enforce, or how do we test, I guess, maximum a, a number of residents per household? Which is the whole thing.
You can't.
Whoa.
Unless it becomes a health and safety issue somehow.
So I can build an ADU and then I can rent it to somebody and there's nothing that helps me chase more than 40 people out of that thing even though it's only made for a studio or a single bedroom?
Correct, same thing with a single-family house.
Unless you could prove that it's a health and safety issue.
Yeah, it'd have to be a health hazard. So is there anything in any other codes that helped me in relation to that? I guess it, is it a contract matter? Does it become a contract, rental contract matter?
There is, the only condition is, and I'm trying to remember the agency, it has something to do with child welfare. I ran across it one time in the past where you cannot have more than two, two children per bedroom. Had my parents known that, I would have got my own bedroom. But there is some stipulation on that and that's about the only way to really contain the density. I don't know if, if it's even legal for us to put it in the code that person per square foot or something. And I don't know of any city that has any occupancy density on a house, on a single-family residence.
My guess is HCD is being so stringent on the enforcement of these regulations, I don't think that would fly, is my gut.
Anything further? All right, that's it.
All right.
Do you have your direction? So the next steps are you'll come back to, you're coming back to Planning Commission or you're coming back to council?
No, we're, have still a few more items, if you don't mind. All right.
We're talking about height again?
This is the height, so we can do the same as we discussed on the ADU, if you guys are okay with that, because we have the same 16-feet height requirement. Would you guys be okay with the same requirements for both?
Chair Jeru.
I like what our city manager suggested, just cap it two stories and leave it alone.
We will do. Thank you, Chairman. One of the points that came in our last city council meeting was the notice. This is something that we could remove from our requirements. Does the city want to give adjacent property owners a courtesy notice when an urban lot split or a primary unit is being submitted?
I think that it's good to have a courtesy notice. You need to make it clear on the notice that it's a courtesy notice, but just to let them know. And then to call if they have questions.
All right. Then for the water requirements, did I skip them? I'm so sorry. This would be the same as the ADU if the council and the Planning Commission decides this is the same as the previous requirements for ADU. Are we okay with this, just mimicking the same requirements that we talked about earlier?
I'm in favor of that, yes.
All right. There's only one item then that I would like to bring up, which is the deed restriction. And this is something that came up in our city council when we presented. There was, there is a deed restriction section, it's the section 18.65.080. And we are requiring that second units and boat units of a two-unit development, if rented, shall only be rented at an affordable rent for low-income household as defined by the Health and Safety Code, section 50053, and shall only be rented to low-income households as defined in the Health and Safety Code, section 50079.54, a minimum of 55 years. Staff is recommending to remove this section.
Remove it?
Yes, and we have that direction from our city attorney, Brian, who can explain he came across. Maybe there might be some conflicts. Maybe there might be some conflicts with the legislation. Brian, can you please elaborate on this section?
Sure, thank you. So I believe this was not... Well, actually, I'll see if that... But yeah, essentially, our understanding of this keeps evolving as we look at it more, we see how it's implemented in different cities, we get further guidance from HCD, and we receive comments when we take ordinances to other cities. So simply put, after further analysis, we would recommend not moving forward with the affordability. We just don't think we can support it from a legal perspective.
Well, I think it would be nice to have it in there, and then if somebody challenged it, we could remove it.
And my understanding is it was included in another city's ordinance.
Okay.
It was taken to HCD, and HCD pushed back on that.
So, no, you can't do that?
Basically, yes.
All right. All right, so we'll remove it.
I'd rather pay the attorney now and do it than pay him when it's challenged.
All right, no, it sounds like it's already been successfully challenged, so that's... I would say remove it. Okay.
And this would be the last item that we haven't covered that is not similar to the ADU requirements that we went over. And if there's any other additional requirements that the council might want to address on the SB9, we can do that.
Any further items? Commissioner Cecilia?
Thank you. Back to the notification for the surrounding people, there's no course of action for them, correct?
That is correct. There's no course of action. It's a ministerial process. We're just notifying them that there's a process.
Right, and that's my question, like, we notify our regular, you know, when there's a project going in, and there's a course of action. People can come in and say, you know, "The light's too bright," and we can put trees in or something. So my question with notifying people is, I'm afraid we're going to set up an expectation that we can make changes that we can't make.
Well, the notice will have to give them a very explicit idea of what they cannot do, but it's to let them know what's going on in their neighborhood.
Okay. Or just to make sure that whatever notification we do send out, that people understand that this is not a place where there's a course of action, we're just letting you know, like, to make sure the letter makes that very clear.
Well, to commissioners.
Chair Jerome.
Thank you, ma'am. The flag lot thing that we talked about, the restriction of flag lots, that's just with SB9 right now? Projects? Or is this going to be something that we're going to look at citywide?
It's just for the SB9 projects.
Okay. Is it something we can look at later as in general development?
In general development, we have a lot more latitude because it's not a ministerial approval. Therefore, it can go to Planning Commission. You guys can weigh in and tell us, "We hate flag lots. We don't want flag lots." So that we don't necessarily have to eliminate them in the code. It's something that, as it works through the process organically, you can shape, because maybe there is a reason at times to have one, and it still allows the latitude for the Planning Commission and...
Sure.
Planning to work within that. So it really comes back to, if you guys want us to eliminate completely, we can do that. But I think leaving that elimination out allows enough for a level of flexibility to really work within what we need to do.
No, I think under the Planning Commission, to be able to make that decision would be a better place because, as we already mentioned about Habitat for Humanity, that would have been a good place to do a flag lot because of the visibility around the properties. It's less of a hazard to our personnel that have to do any services at those residents.
Yeah, you can see the second house from the street.
Yes, and it was very... And it was in an open area, so, yes, thank you.
All right, anything further?
By the way, Heidi, great job, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for bearing with us through this process.
Yes. Anything further? All right, seeing note takers, and I will second Chair Jerome's comments. This is a tough... This is a tough item for somebody to know everything about, and I believe that you really addressed the questions that we had very well, very well prepared. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we will adjourn to our next... Next regular city council meeting will be held Tuesday, April 26, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. Any request to have an item placed on future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. I'm not announcing the next Planning Commission meeting because that will be after the next city council meeting. We are adjourned.
Can we go... Can I ask a question about what it...